Okay, ladies and gentlemen, call to order. First item is roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Scully.
Here.
Alderman Hedley.
Here.
Alderman West. Alderman Arnold.
Here.
There is a quorum present, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, next item is an indication led by a pastor regulator from Cross Creek Baptist Mission. And I'll be followed by a pledge of allegiance from Alderman.
Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this story as they've given to us. And Father, we thank you for the country in which we live. Thank you for Green Valley, a wonderful place to raise our children and grandchildren. And we ask you to watch over our little children as they go to school, keep them safe from those who want to harm them. And Father, I pray for our city council here as they come in the other night to make decisions, may you give them the very wisdom that they need. I ask you to be with our country, to be protected, and our soldiers as they defend the United States of America. And Father, I would just ask you tonight, in Jesus' name, to watch over our law enforcement, uh, those who work on the ambulance and hospitals, all those emergency folks, firefighters, and may you watch over them as well. Thank you for this privilege that we have to come here and have this meeting and voice our opinion before these wonderful people. We ask this in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. We should do the flag of the United States of America and we should honor for what we stand as one nation under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions tonight?
No changes, Mayor.
They say none, they say no appropriations. We'll move on to citizens' participation. Uh, we ask the citizens to step forth to the, uh, microphone and podium and address the board. Uh, please give your, uh, name and address for the record. And then this, just to let everyone know, we do have a public hearing scheduled tonight for CUP for Valley Speedway. There'll be a separate citizen participation time for that, so this will be for items that are not on the agenda.
My name's Nancy Cotton. I live at 309 and 317 Front Street. Uh, my agenda right now is going to start off with, uh, I want to commend some of our businesses. I know there are some that aren't coming to the eye or make too much noise, but do you know that we had a polar run for coats for the homeless? That was, uh, Charlotte wrote out. Oh, they didn't even buy brand new coats for me. Do you know we got a lady that mess at the racetrack, she made that for me. Do you know we have given these some nursing homes and for Christmas? Uh, they also gave, uh, my cousin in Iowa makes the hoodie, we don't need it. Uh, we show if Michelle's momma comes to town, I want to text her because, uh, we supply the senior citizens once a week with wonderful, uh, cheesecake, mudsleigh, strawberry cakes and stuff like that. But we do this every week and this comes from our neighbors' hands. We have a lot of businesses here in town. EWS picked me up to carry all my cans for the deal. We have wonderful businesses and we need to appreciate them and show them that we do care and get active with them. We have businesses that donate that you, you all don't have a clue to. You don't have a clue. And I'm going to tell you something, it's sad. I got JJ. We're working on, uh, all of them are working on scholarships for, uh, the schools through our cardboard. EWS is providing me with the Santa Claus and do little things we own, uh, for Christmas time. I don't have to pay for that. That's all donated and these are businesses. And you can go up and down the stairs. They donate. People, we need to get in there, hey, thank you for being in our town, thank you for helping and doing the wonderful things you do. The nurses, they help me out. He orders stuff special for me because you gotta, I clear shelves off sometimes with thirty-two is the number of pluggs away, so how many people are in there? So we need to, uh, respond to our businesses. And do you know, I will tell you, we gave two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to food camps to service in Green Valley people. We've done, uh, twenty-seven of these lovely containers for Ronny McCombs, pop tops. And people, that's a lot of pop tops. And I want you to know, this is the beginning of number five for this season. Now, we do have quite a record to break for next year. But I, I want you to know that the businesses here in town helping us, the racetrack is donating in the summer time, I get some of those people come up to my house and leave me stuff on the porch and then there they go. Uh, I will say, we have some of our city employees that donate too. And I'm very thankful for what they do. But we sure got a lot of people that need to get more involved. And I'll tell you this, the only business that does it only a double way, but I don't need to thank them too. So, the rest of them know who I am because I'm there a lot, but that's the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to consider agenda.
We accept concern agenda.
I got motion Alderman Scully to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Hedley. Any discussion? Seeing none, now I'll fairly please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign. And next time is a public hearing, it's a request for a conditional use permit by Dennis Shroud to operate a racetrack facility at three forty-eight East Old US Forty Highway in Grand Island, Missouri.
Oh, I got one already.
Thank you. We'll staff to start and then we'll let Miss Shroud speak and then open up the public hearing portion.
Okay. Uh, Mayor and Board, um, basically where we're at at this point, uh, we were directed in July of two thousand fourteen by the Board to work with Mr. Shroud to attempt to come up with a conditional use permit for the operation of a racetrack at three forty-eight East Forty Highway, US Forty Highway. Um, during that process, Mr. Shroud came up with a list of conditions that he wanted to have included with that permit. Uh, the first step in the process was a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. That took place on February eighteenth, um, of last month. After listening to comments from the public and Mr. Shroud, uh, the commission voted to recommend approval, uh, to the Board of a conditional use permit with, uh, some amendments to that, uh, request from Mr. Shroud. That was a six-one vote. So, I'm just going to go over what those conditions were that they recommended approval for and how that differed from, uh, what Mr. Shroud had proposed. Uh, first one being that forty-five race car events allowed per year, which would not include the March test and tunes or practices. Uh, the events would be from April to October, uh, including two race nights every other weekend. And what that would look like as far as race events, if you look at the Board, um, next to Alderman Arnold, the little spots that you see in red or pink there, basically when you add all those up, that's what you'd be looking at, uh, fifty-two events. So that's your forty-five regular and then seven weekday. Uh, the next condition was an eleven PM curfew. Uh, after that, it'd be eighty-five decibel maximum sound level until ten and eighty maximum sound level from ten to eleven. Uh, that differed a little bit from what Mr. Shroud had proposed. He had proposed ninety until ten and eighty and, uh, from ten to eleven. The method for measurement would be a three-minute weighted average, uh, using the LEQ, measured at the southernmost end of the cul-de-sac on James Rollo Drive. And that's on that map that I showed there. It's literally just the end of that cul-de-sac. Um, that differed a little bit from what Mr. Shroud had proposed. He had proposed a one-hour weighted average. Um, next, all cars, cars must meet a ninety-five decibel limit measured one hundred feet from the car. Um, he had asked for a hundred and they went with ninety-five. Um, but that sound will be measured a hundred feet at an RPM level between three and four thousand RPM. Uh, seven weeknight races would be allowed per year. Um, weeknights being defined as Monday through Thursday. Um, and one addition they made was no weeknight events allowed on school nights unless Mr. Shroud was to get approval from the Board, uh, prior to that. All classes must run functional race mufflers. That's something we've had for a while now. Uh, the next was the city will not limit quieter events. And those events were listed as motorcycle events, demo derby, truck and tractor pulls, go-kart events, any event with less than ten cars on the track. Um, he had asked for non-motorized events to be on there. We took that out because that's not part of the CUP. That's nothing that's, uh, that's restricted anyway. Um, with that, all quieter events, we required to meet the sound requirements, uh, found in the permit. Uh, the permit would be for three years was the recommendation. Uh, Mr. Shroud had not put any time limit on that. Um, all structures and property must maintain full compliance with approved, uh, City Building Code was added. And the last, uh, condition that was added by PNZ or recommended by PNZ, should there be any violation of the permit, the city will provide notice and give thirty days for compliance. So just kind of getting that on paper, you know, what process we would go through if, uh, there were any violations. But that is the result of the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing that was on the eighteenth, so that's all we have at this time.
Mrs. Shroud, you have anything to add?
No, not at this point.
Okay.
Do you want to have any questions we can ask? Can I open it up for public hearing? I mean, we can hold up for questions, so it's a public hearing, rather.
Okay. At this time then, I will open it up, uh, for public comment, both for and against the track. We ask you, uh, step forth to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Richard Die, seventeen oh one Northwest Twelfth Street, Blue Springs, Missouri. Want to thank the Board of Aldermen and Mayor Todd for a couple of minutes here. Um, up to this point, I really haven't had a dog in the hunt, so to speak, so I really didn't, but I've watched from afar and Dennis and I have been good friends for a long time and I, I know him as a reasonable individual and good businessman and he's always been part of the community in Blue Springs and I know he has been down here too. Um, and I always hope everybody could resolve the conflicts, be, and kind of look at the opportunity that, you know, having a business opened in Green Valley presented. Um, the reason I'm here is because we are, Blue Springs and Blue Springs South have senior football players. Every year we take twenty, between twenty and twenty-five, this year we have twenty-four from Blue Springs and I think twenty-one or twenty-two from Blue Springs South. They go to Jamaica and build homes out in the jungle for people. So it's pretty much a growth, kind of one of those growth things for the boys. It's about eighteen hundred dollars a boy, so it's fairly sizable when you add up that to the amount and the number of boys. Dennis has been nice enough this year to allow me to sell tickets, keep half of the proceeds, to have a, a Blue Springs football, Blue Springs South football night on May sixteenth, where we can have, I can sell to people in Blue Springs, hopefully, well, let me rephrase this, you know how it is, the boys are supposed to be selling them. But normally if we give it to the boys, we find the tickets in the backseat of their cars, uh, three weeks later. So what we're looking at is, is really pushing the boys, really marketing it in Blue Springs, really putting the, you know, Green Valley and the racetrack and everybody as being, this is a great opportunity for them to make some, some income for this. So it's going to be really a nice, nice evening. We're going to do some special things so that we get north and south. We're not going to, believe me, where, where's the police, we're not going to have any wars or anything like that. We do that on the football field. But what I wanted to do was is just recommend, if there's any way that you guys can resolve the conflict, so he has a good season and we're able to make, uh, make some income from this for these guys and get them off to Jamaica and build some houses and do some things that they need to learn about, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Sean Burns, um, Overland Park, Kansas, nine four three four Conell Drive, Overland Park, Kansas. And this is Elena Whitehead. She's a, uh, resident of Green Valley and also my super fan. Um, I drive the twenty-eight SB mod. I'm also the track pastor out at, um, Green Valley and I do all the prayers beforehand in the pits with all the guys. Um, this little girl means the world to me and if I can't come race at Green Valley, she's not going to be able to come see me and, uh, that'll break my heart. Thanks a lot. I just wanted you to come up with. Um, on another note, um, I don't know if you've heard about our night at the Mavericks that we had where we drove on the ice. I was one of the cars that did. The Mavericks have contacted me, they're going to be hopefully doing two events out at the Speedway this year. Um, they've asked me to, uh, sponsor or be, them to sponsor my car and be, be represent them. Um, so if that doesn't happen, the Maverick deal's not going to happen and it's going to definitely hurt my race program, so, um, I hope that you guys can resolve this. Uh, more for these guys than anybody. Uh, I'm going to be at her elementary school, she doesn't even know this yet, uh, the twenty-eighth or twenty-seventh of this month, um, to see her and her classmates, uh, because this little girl, every time she has a show and tell, she has to show something about me. So, uh, and she doesn't even, uh, she's not even my, my, my daughter, so, um, so thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, my name's Tyler Nelson. I live at fourteen zero zero seven South Sycamore Street, Olafah, Kansas. And I'd like to say Valley Speedway is more than just a track. I have learned so much going there. We have showed up week in and week out for the past five years. Every week we come here, we stop at Casey's, we fill up our gas tank in our race rig, grab something to eat. We spend over a hundred dollars in Green Valley before we even get to the track. Even when we don't stop at Valley, even when we're going farther east, we still stop in Green Valley to support this community because we believe in it. Oak Grove's just a couple more miles, that's a lot better gas stop, but we stop here because the racetrack's here and we want to support it. Excuse me. During my time at Valley Speedway, I have been, I've become inspired to help in the community through the racetrack. I have actually started my own nonprofit organization because of this. Valley has been a great catalyst for my endeavors. We have raised over a hundred backpacks and two hundred winter hats for underprivileged youth through fundraisers at Valley Speedway. We also got, uh, we also helped a young girl with cerebral palsy get a wheelchair that her family could not afford through fundraising we did. The racetrack is a positive place for families to spend time together. It is a great environment. Also, my grandparents know where I am every week. I'm not running the streets causing trouble. I'm at the racetrack following my dreams to become a professional race car driver. Without Valley Speedway, young racers like me would not have a place to go to chase our dreams. We would not have a place to learn the importance of hard work. We would not have, we would not have a place to inspire us, to help the less fortunate and to help in the community. I know this because these are the things Valley taught me. Without Valley, I would not be the young man standing in front of you speaking today. So with all this positive that it gives the youth of Green Valley and surrounding areas, is it worth shutting down over noise? Thank you and I hope we can get this resolved. Thank you.
Now Tyler, would you please tell them that you made experience of both nursing homes? And I have a young man who's waiting for him to hurry up for a race car at the nursing home because they want to see it firsthand. Every week I hear, when's he coming back?
My name is Nancy Robinson. I live at one four zero zero seven South Sycamore, Olafah, Kansas. Tyler Nelson is my grandson. Uh, this is the thing that we've been able to do at the Valley. Uh, the club here, Tyler, is the ambassador to the Boys and Girls Club and the spokesperson. And he's learned this through racing and Green Valley is his home track. Everywhere we go, everywhere we race, Green Valley is mentioned. Now, this comes directly from Ford and this is one of the sponsors that you have here for Green Valley and the track. So this is quite impressive to know that you have people like this supporting you because they could have chosen any other track, any other place, but they chose Green Valley. You know, I believe Dennis has done everything possible to help every one of these young people to learn a lot of lessons, to give back to everyone. Uh, we have had so many fundraisers out there, Dennis says a lot to have. We've raised for the Boys and Girls Club. We've bought people from the Boys and Girls Club. You know, this is our, excuse me, it's just not a racetrack, it's our family. And if it closes down, you're actually closing down our family. This is like going to dinner on Sunday or Thanksgiving and inviting twenty or thirty of your friends and you can, if you imagine not being able to do that. And that's what would happen if Valley shuts down. So in all due respect, please, please consider keeping our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlene Consien. This is Christopher Consien. We live at thirty-three twenty-two South Gardner in Oak Grove, uh, Missouri. We border Green Valley and Oak Grove, so Chris is lucky enough to be able to go to Green Valley High School and has attended Green Valley schools through all of his schooling. He has now enrolled in the eighteen to twenty-one program, which is a program that teaches children with special needs, different opportunities and how to get jobs and education and different life skills and trades. And we are working with Don Mason, hopefully, to do some eighteen to twenty-one programs out there with the kids. Chris goes to the program and all he does is brag about it. On Saturday afternoon, I am a single mother, we do our yard work. I have three and a half acres. When we're out in the yard on a Saturday afternoon and we're raking and it's tired and it's hot, we hear Green Valley Raceway and to us, that's what makes it our home. Chris looks at me and says, Mom, do we get to go to the races tonight? And I say, if we get these leaves done, that's where we're going, buddy. So don't close the racetrack because of noise, because it makes it our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Larry Waters, um, Kansas City, Kansas, twenty-four oh one North Seventy-seventh Street. Um, I got a concern. Um, I, I, I'm not a public speaker, but I wrote some things down here I wanted to talk about. You know, what are we doing? Do you know? Can you help? What, what is this really about? Is this political reason, jobs, what, noise? You know, the sand drags are grandfathered in. So Valley liked noise at one time evidently because it's grandfathered in. There was noise here, it was farm country. Uh, is this a weekly problem thing or a Friday night thing? We got the drags on Saturday nights, the noise can't be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trinity Stanley, nine six one Northwest Bay Tree Drive, Green Valley, Missouri. I'm speaking on behalf of my experience with Valley Speedway because I've, I've hosted in three, for three years Veterans Oktoberfest. We weren't allowed or able to do it last year because of all what was going on here at the Valley Speedway. So unfortunately, I couldn't give a free event for our nation's veterans, their family members and friends last year. Uh, it's been a big deal with the VA Medical Center coming, UMB Bank, I have a host of other agencies that have come and to provide the services that the veterans need in our rural areas. Um, I also am concerned because as a citizen, with him paying money for attorney's fees and court fees and we're paying it as citizens, to me, we could have put that money together to come up with a resolution to solve this. So at the end of the day, we spent money out taxpayer-wise, he spent money out, out of his pocket and we still have no answer. Just a concern citizen, but overall, I want to thank him for all that you do for our nation's veterans and I want to also thank Colonel Ballard, our only living Medal of Honor recipient, once again standing in Green Valley that comes to every event that Valley Speedway has hosted along with all his hard work and employees as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Leroy Morrison. I live at one zero zero two North Lynn. And I just, I see kids up in the grandstands, they, they love to see the racing. I used to race out there, uh, a couple of years ago and just, it's a fun experience. It's something for you to do on Saturday night. It gets the kids out of the house from playing video games, it's real life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Shroud, three oh one Southwest Sixteen, Sixteen, Sixteenth Street, Blue Springs, Missouri. I run the motocross track for my dad, but I also help him out at the Speedway. Um, I would like to inform you guys, you, uh, of the, uh, safety aspects of getting a CUP out there in a timely manner. If we can get it done tonight, that would be awesome. We have drivers, new drivers that came out and watched all last year that built cars over the wintertime that are, that depend on the test and tunes. This month, to get out there and drive without twenty or thirty cars on the track by themselves, that way if they spin out, they do something wrong, it's them only. That way when race season starts, they know what their car is going to do. They understand the aspect of, they actually have to turn right to go left. Also, the drivers from last year that made changes to their cars, built new cars, they can get out there during these test and tunes this month to test the stuff that they've done over the winter, to make sure they've got every bolt tight, to make sure they didn't forget anything. That way if something happens during a test and tune, there's one car on the track, they don't cause an accident. Also, the track itself, the safety aspect in the track itself, it's been sitting all winter. It hadn't had a grader on it all winter, it hasn't been packed in all winter. The dirt freezes and thaws out, it freezes and thaws out, it loosens up. We need a tight track. The test and tunes help with that too. They go out there, they run it, it gets rough, we, we grade it. They go out there, they run it, it gets rough, we grade it. One car on the track at a time. That way if they hit a bump and they bounce, it's only them on the track. That way race season comes, the track's ready to go, the cars are ready to go, the new drivers are ready to go. This is all what we do this month during the test and tunes, that way we're ready to go in April. I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, that way you knew what we did in March. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Herman, um, nine oh one Northwest Poplar, a commercial real estate developer and a longtime resident of Green Valley. I did run for state representative in your area this year also. Um, Green Valley has a destination spot. I went through this with, with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm dealing with large developments, commercial companies such as Hardee's, McDonald's, Taco Bell. When they look at Green Valley, they look at Green Valley and they say we're a road dot. But what we have on that road dot map is a destination. We actually have two, which nobody considers, but the main one is the Green Valley Airport, the second one is the racetrack. People come to a destination to spend their money. I heard this young man say he spends a hundred dollars every time they come to the races. It doesn't matter if he spends at McDonald's, Taco Bell, we don't have one yet, Advance Auto, O'Reilly's, Casey's, or the racetrack. It turns over five times in our city. Each dollar turns over five times within that city and that is a national, known national average. It's actually five to seven and we will go on the low here. So for each one hundred dollars he brings in, it turns into five hundred dollars switching hands in our businesses, which pays employees to stay and live in our city. It pays to, to pay utilities, it pays police, fire, ambulance services. So we don't want to kill, kill a destination spot because of the sound. There might be some changes that might be done, he's agreed to most of those changes from what I heard. I think we need to keep Green Valley alive with the Speedway. It was on the master plan in nineteen seventy-eight to have demolition derbies in this town, which I attended as a child. And I, I know Mr. Todd's a longtime area resident and he remembers those. The city is called come grow with us, but when I go talk to a company or another real estate broker in the industry, Green Valley is getting a black eye. It's not because of this, just because of years of not being able to pass things, to get things improved, to develop. There's, there's large areas of development, like look at the MB Theaters area. We have to pay for that tax, that finance funding. And Valley Speedway, as long as we're paying taxes, we're helping do that. Anybody that comes to our city helps do that. So I'm in favor of keeping the racetrack and sure, we all have to negotiate things, but as citizens, the citizens that were complaining, when they bought their home, the racetrack was there, most of the people that are complaining bought a house after two thousand three or two thousand four. Their realtor and themselves should then do diligence before paying and closing on that property. So, that is all I have to say about it. If you guys have any questions, I'm waiting for anything.
Thank you.
Hi, Alderman. Mayor, my name is Michael Kehas and, uh, My name is Michael Kehaus, and, uh, I work with Tyler Nelson Racing. And I'm not a motorhead. I, uh, I've been introduced to racing for different reasons, but I work with a lot of nonprofits in Kansas City. Dennis has opened up the track and helped us raise thousands of dollars for the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Kansas City and along with some other endeavors that we do. The thing is, I think that most people are- are missing here, or if it's a sound issues or whatever, is that you guys have a jewel. And that jewel is, is when the pastor came up here and said, "God bless our children" and other things like that, what you have here is a place for kids to go, families, generations. Generations, when you look up in the stands and you see a grandma, their kids, their grandkids. I get chills when I think about it because you don't see that too often. I'm not part of the racing. I- I'm there and I've gotten involved in it. But I get chills every time that I go there on a Friday or Saturday night because you guys have a jewel here. And that jewel is, is that you have a place where families can gather that are doing its good, clean fun. Now, if drugs haven't affected this area or surrounding areas, well, God bless you. But if you shut down somewhere that families can go and spend time with their kids and know where they're at, I think it's only advantageous that you work out the sound issues or whatever the issue is, like this gentleman said. What is the issue? If it is a sound issue, I think there's certain things that- that rise above certain sound issues. I don't live in the cul-de-sac or whatever that- that- that housing issue is. But the one thing that you do have going for you is that you have a place where families gather, they spend money, and they spend time together. So I ask you kindly to consider the sound issue over the other issues that you could have if you didn't have the track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Mr. Kehaus?
It is Mr. Kehaus.
Oh, Kehaus, okay.
Kehaus, do you need my address? Fifty-eight thirteen West Hundred Forty-Fifth Street, Overland Park, Kansas. Six-six-sixty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Don Mason. I live at sixteen oh eight Southwest Cherokee Strip in Blue Springs, Missouri. I've been up here several times defending my track here and, um, got some pretty good evidence here today that I thought maybe you should read- you should hear by Who's Retired. They said seven hundred and sixty-nine U.S. dirt tracks around here, okay? More than eighty thousand drivers, one point three million fans per weekend from February to November, fifty-two million tickets sold a year. That's more than NASCAR, NFL, NBA, and NHL combined. Why would you want to get rid of that? I have a son that we started at the age of fifteen in racetrack driving. He's not doing drugs, he's not out doing alcohol, and I have a younger one that we're about ready to bring in as well. Do you- I mean, your crime rate is going up. Why? Because you don't have us redneck race car drivers coming through at odd hours of time of the day or night to keep that riffraff out of your city. I really think you guys need to think about this. I mean, it's sad because I live in Blue Springs. I'm the next town over from you guys. It's a great community. I didn't even know about this place. I could be out at, uh, Lakeside Speedway, but I choose to come here. Not because it's three miles down the road, but it is more family event at Valley Speedway than Lakeside or I thirty-five, the closest ones, Dr. Name, you know, that would be within distance to drive. But seriously, it's- this is the youngest track that these kids can come to and learn how to drive, and they're not out on the roads doing this. They're at the track. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Robert Grove. I live with Don Mason, sixteen oh eight Southwest Cherokee Strip. Um, some of you might know me. I'm a DirecTV technician. I know I've been in a couple of years' houses. Um, I've been with DirecTV for five years. Uh, actually, it'll be six years come September. Um, I'm in a lot of the residents' houses, and that's the first thing I ask. I, uh, I personally commute the track, you know, and I want to know what the residents think. Um, I'd say in five years, I've had one customer complain, and I said this before, she was just a complainer. I gave her all new remotes, she was still not happy. It, you know, you got people that are gonna complain no matter what. Um, but I'd say over the five years, I just- I would say the handful of people that are complaining about the sound versus the people that support the track and just what I've seen, being a DirecTV technician in the residence home, it's- it's by far not even close. So, you know, power's in your guys' hands. I hope we do the right thing here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anna Lawson. I live at three three two-two South Gardner. I'd like to appeal to everyone here and think about what your decision's going to be. I have a special needs child as well, and my son can't go into theaters. He can't go into different places because it's too compact and it's too loud. And you say it's loud at the track. My autistic son sits at that track and watches that game, and he loves it. And he counts every time that car goes around that track. And you know what that tells me? My son's getting educated for free. I go out there and I spend at least fifty to seventy-five dollars a night when we do this because we're just having good, clean fun. And I think, uh, that I see these young kids out there on that track learning all that crazy moves and fun, just good, clean fun. They could be trying to do that out there in our streets and killing someone. You know, that's my point, that I'd like to get across to all you guys. There's kids out there that are want to race, and if they don't have a place to practice, then they're gonna go out on our streets and they're gonna hurt someone because they're gonna try to go around that corner real fast like they could that track, and bam, there's that light pole or somebody else, God forbid. I'd also like to let you guys know that, again, we were here first. These people bought this house, they had to know that there was a track there. If they didn't, then, oh, I'm sorry, but you can't come in now and say we want you to change something that's been going on forever and take all these kids' fun times away, our family fun away. That would be destroying the town. This town's known for that track. So I just- I wish you'd really think about what you're gonna make your decision today. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Don Curless. I live at eight twenty-five Stonebrook Drive, Grain Valley, just less than a mile and a half away from here. Uh, every person I've listened to so far has brought- there's nothing new I'm gonna say that nobody has said before. And the most important thing that comes out around here is the kids, keeping them off the street. My boy went into racing when he was real small. Now he's thirty-seven years old. Through his skills of developing race cars and everything else, he's got a decent job. He's never been in trouble in Grain Valley. He works for Kansas City Parent Light Company for the last eleven years. His skills have developed from what he learned by putting cars together, by racing them, everything else. And another thing I hear about, a lot of things are like five decibels apart, ninety versus ninety-five, I think, and a hundred versus ninety-five, or eighty versus eighty-five. Uh, it seems ridiculous. And this lady, I didn't get her name, and she hit the nail on the head. Is this all about revenue or is this about our community? Now, I know that being a citizen of Grain Valley, we pay a lot of taxes here. And the people, I haven't heard of any yet, that people that would be against the racetrack would really complain if their taxes had to go up in the future because we had to make up the difference in revenues for the city of Grain Valley. And that's all I really gotta say. I hope you consider the best part, the best thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go off. Okay. I'm Tom. I'm Connie Shroud, co-owner of Valley Speedway. Uh, I would just like to thank everyone who's come tonight and spoke. They've repeatedly done this, come and spoke in favor of the track. Is there ever anyone who is against the track? What's the per- can you tell me the percentage of people that are against the track versus who is for the track? Just a percentage. I don't need name and addresses.
I can tell you this time. I had more people contacting me who were against it than contacted me that were for it, and that's a first.
Why aren't they?
I'm just saying, up- up until now.
Why- why- why do they not come? I don't understand. Is it me? Does anybody understand why they don't come?
You know, I think- I think somebody was bringing in ballots. Me and my wife were sitting in a car, and there was people coming and going, and I don't know what that was about. And I don't know if it's retained, so it's not there, but I was meddling with my phone, and I'm sorry to take your time. I'm meddling with my phone, and she said, "That lady just sent you into that asshole." And I live against the Kansas, I come out here racing, I'm in the green, and I go back to Kansas because nobody knows me here. So I don't know how that came about, but that was weird, that's what I got tonight by coming.
Because I know all you people talk to the people in your ward. I have been told that, that you especially talk to all your citizens.
Not all, but I, um, I go- I've been- I've been-
Said you try to.
I try to.
Okay. What is- what is your percentage in your ward that is against the track?
I'll repeat what the mayor said. There's- there's people that don't want the track in this town, and they won't come to the meetings because when they come to the meetings, they- they get treated badly.
We have never-
Yeah, I- I can- I'm just- I'm just telling you.
Have we?
I'm just telling you what I've been told by citizens.
Police officers here.
You ask, I'm just telling you.
Okay, you have police officers here. If we had treated someone badly, wouldn't they have taken over or something?
I've- ma'am, I personally don't know what you- what folks say to them, whether it's inside here or outside. You asked a question, and I told you that I've spoke with my residents in Ward One, and they- they do not oppose- they- they oppose the track, but they won't come to the meetings because of where they feel like it's hot, it's a hostile environment to them, and they won't come. Now, you can laugh all you want. You asked a question, I'm just telling you the answer.
I'm not laughing.
And-
This is very serious. This is my-
It's serious to me, too. It's the business we have in town.
Livelihood.
It is- it is- it is- it's serious to me.
We have retired. We're not young anymore. I'm sixty-seven. He's gonna be sixty-six. Yeah, it's wearing on me, I'll tell you. And I don't want your sympathy, by no means. I want a decision. Are we gonna run or are we not? These people that come and support us, can you imagine how hard they are standing up here begging to keep something open that they enjoy? The money that comes into this town, why can't you see it? I don't understand. Those people that don't want the track, do- how much money do they bring in? Do they even shop in Blue Springs or in Grain Valley?
No, no, they don't.
So all I ask is, please take in consideration of what we have done for the city. We are good, honest people. We have eight grandchildren that come to the races. I have three sons that come to the races and help, numerous family members that come. You know, why do we have to stand and beg for something? I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board?
My name is Becky Wells. I live at twelve ten Arti My, and I've been here since seventy-nine. The noise I get from the freeway is way more than the noise I get from a racetrack one or two nights a week. And I've learned to live with that. And, you know, over the years, the racetrack has gotten quieter instead of louder. And, you know, I don't understand all of this, but I feel like we have something in this town that nobody else has, and we should embrace it and- and try to make it to where other people want to come and say, "Gee, I want to go to Grain Valley." They have- they have this racetrack, and they do all these things for the kids and the families. And I just- I just hope that you will think about all of that when you make your choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Cotton, again. When it comes to noise, I hate to tell you all this. If you go down through Ward Two by where I'm at, I got a lot of people that get a little upset early in the morning dur- during the summer when the football getting business and the band's going on. Uh, I know the city and the school districts are not, uh, held by the noise level because when you all have the stuff down here at the park, I can hear it on my street. And she is right. The highway does make a lot of noise. But you know what? The train does, too. These are things that take a necessity of living. We need to concentrate on what we have. We don't have a newspaper. I talk to businesses, and I don't mean the ones here. I've got connections, believe it or not, with other businesses that I've worked with. And I'm gonna tell you, Nancy, you don't have a newspaper. That's kind of important. Nancy, you don't have a chamber worth a hoot. And I'm going, "How did you find that out?" But you know what? That lovely little computer you all like to have so much has hurt this town, too. And I'm sorry to say it because I went on a ride along and I couldn't understand why the police officer, through the course of the evening, twelve hours I went, we kept running through the school barn. Well, I got up today, and Mr. Cotton said, "Nancy, here's the answer. Some kid broke in and got seven buses with a fire extinguisher." You know, people, we need to work together. That was the basis of what I wanted to get in your head. We have a heck of a community, and I am so proud of some of the people. And I am telling you, when I have a lady that lives on Front Street, works in Iowa, and hauls all of her aluminum cans, which she could get five cents on a can, and all of her cardboard for scholarship money and stuff, hey, wake up. If this whole day gone town worked together, look where we would be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Garrison, two hundred Southwest Sixth Street, Oak Grove, Missouri. Uh, I'm one of those kids that I started racing at fifteen, and, uh, I've been out of it for a couple of years due to work and don't have the time. But, you know, the- the test and tunes coming up, I've been out of racing for about four years. And I'm just looking forward- my car's all but done. I'm gonna run a B-mod out of Valley. And I would love to be able to go out and test and tune because I've been off for so long. And I've been an asphalt guy. I've ran dirt twice. Um, I just want to go out and get some practice, and I have no idea if we're gonna be able to get practice in or not. I don't- that's why I came tonight was to, you know, see if we can get this figured out. Um, you know, I- I grew up racing when I was young, and it- it kept me from doing drugs, and that was- that was my passion, something I was very passionate about. And, uh, I keep my car up in Holt, Missouri, and I can- I can go race up north, but I choose to come and run out of Grain Valley because of where it's at. I- I- the community, it's all about the community. I don't know anybody up north. I know people out in Grain Valley. I mean, I've just been going out here for a couple of years. But I- I just would like to get in some test and tune and some practice, and just hope that we can come to a conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Toman, uh, six zero seven two South Highway thirteen in Higginsville, Missouri. I race up here, sprint cars. Uh, I have two of them. My son and I drive. He's- he's fifty-four years old and been, uh, he's been involved in racing since he was, um, early teens. And, uh, I'm like every- most of these other people have said, the kids are better off around the racetrack than they are out on the streets doing booze and drugs, and- and I couldn't agree more with all that. And, uh, the only thing new I have to say is I've got a sponsor that's waiting for a decision here because, um, this is an expensive sport, and we need sponsors to help us. And, uh, he always, um, he wants to know if we're gonna run here at Grain Valley because his business is in Independence on Twenty-four Highway. So, um, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate what you guys are up against. You can't please everybody. I was on the school board for six years in Higginsville. I- I, I fully am aware that you cannot please everybody. But, uh, there's so much good that comes from racing, as far as families go, and that's been expressed here. And, uh, I have a sponsor, uh, issue, and I'd rather not run up and down the road when this is the closest track I've got to, so thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Norm Combs, one zero zero eight Southwest Foxtail Drive, Grain Valley. And Scott, I'm in favor of the track. And the reason is that we need businesses in this town, we don't need to drive them away. We have a couple of destinations here that people around town talk about, like, I've heard people in Kansas City or Grandview or somewhere talk about the brass armadillo. Uh, also, I know people on the East Coast and West Coast who have RVs that stop at Trailside. Oh, you live in Grain Valley, I stopped at Trailside when I crossed the country on I-70. But the main thing is, my real estate taxes went up to thirty-nine hundred dollars last year, and I didn't like it a bit, because we don't have enough other taxes to support the schools, half of the schools, of course, Mayor Todd. And you may thank me for paying my taxes, although you.
I had to look right down.
Anyway. When the track first opened up, it was annoying, because it was loud, and I wasn't used to it. I'd go out on my patio, try to read a good book, or a book, and a bumblebee starts, a bumblebee starts buzzing around. It's annoying, because I'm not used to it. But we need bumblebees, and we need a little diversity, diversity, if I can say that word. Okay? I'm in favor of it. It doesn't bother me now, they put mufflers on the cars, it's quieter, and it's a draw. My only regret is that we can't fill the stands up on both sides. And probably because we have much, so much dissension here that keeps people away. They don't know if it's gonna be here next week or not.
Exactly.
And the best thing we could do would be to run a zip line from Mucky Mountain to the track to get last week's winners coming in and show up. Make it interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to talk to the people about this, it's very important. Um, I know a lot of them have jobs and got 401K retirement.
This is his job. This is how he feeds his family, takes care of his grandchildren, this is his future, this is his legacy. And I think, I appreciate everybody talking about what he brings to Grain Valley, but I think we're forgetting the big picture of how it's gonna affect him and his family. I, I appreciate Ms. Shrat when you said that I wanted to, wanted to speak on that, but no one's looking at who's gonna be affected the most, you guys, your grandchildren, your great grandchildren, and so forth on. This is your retirement, this is your life. Without this, you don't have income, you don't have another way of living. And I think that's the biggest part out of the whole thing, is that, imagine when you guys go home, you guys have jobs, part-time jobs, full-time jobs, retirement, 401K, health insurance, I know I do. We're gonna take it away from this family. Not only are we taking, the community, taking from the community, we're taking from them. And I pray that we don't close this down, it's very heartbreaking for me. I wish you guys luck.
Anyone else wish to speak on a public hearing? Well, I'm not, you don't have, you don't have to speak during that part, you can speak instead. Okay, uh, I've been closing the public hearing portion in. Mrs. Shrat, do you wanna speak?
I'd just like to pass this down, just to give. That's our racetrack on a night, whenever we race, there's probably represented in that picture about ten million dollars' worth of equipment down there that's at the racetrack, of people that come down there, enjoy this facility. Uh, I appreciate what Yolanda and Mike did. We spent several meetings, meeting together with staff, uh, they were productive meetings. I felt like that they cared, they worked with me. Um, the zoning meeting we had last week was productive. Uh, they tweaked what I had a little bit. Um, I don't think, based on the sound, uh, test that we've done, it's something that I can live with. I can live with what, uh, Ken read to you. Um, if I'll ask any, answer any questions you guys have, I didn't stand up here to argue. I am offended by what Scott said about people saying that they were badgered at these meetings. I've taped every one of these meetings, I have had a, my camera guy here, there's never been one word said against anybody at this meeting, inside, outside. And anytime anybody has got on my site and incited anything, I delete them. I, there's no room for it, and if you guys read on my post, I tell them, if you're gonna call, be professional. You know, anybody gets on there and says hateful stuff, does me no good whatsoever, at all. And I question that there's all these people out there. There was, there was a, a survey done, what, four or five years ago, came back, and there's more people, people in favor of that track than against it. Your own survey that was done by a company that had nothing to do with the city. There were more people in favor of the track than against it. And again, I'll answer any questions you got, I'm not up here to argue, I argued all I want to. All I'm telling you is what the zoning board came up with, it's something we can live with. I realize you guys have the ability to rip it apart if you choose to, change it. That's something that we came up with that I can live with, so I don't wanna wear this meeting out any longer than I have to. But if you guys have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I've got a question. Dennis, during our meeting, I asked you to give a rough sound estimate of the quiet, the quiet events, I think that's what we called it here, during the week, the quieter one. Uh, just to kinda get an idea, I know we say that it's quiet, but the bottom line is, we don't wanna be in the same boat we are right now.
Are you talking motorsport events?
Yeah.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, like the motorcycle, the, the stuff you wanted to run during the week.
I would, I will guarantee you that those events would be under the sixty-five decibels that's in place today, if that's any help to you. I don't have a specific number for you, but I'll, I'll guarantee you that those events will be under the sixty-five decimal reading that's on the books right now for your sound ordinance, that really, uh, isn't part of the CUP, but the CUP references. So I'm assuming if we did those events and were under that sixty-five, that we would still be in compliance from the standpoint of your ordinance that's in place right now for the, the city ordinance. I don't remember what the number was for it, but those, those, uh, projects and those events would be under that sixty-five decimal that's already in place at the property line.
And so, on quieter events, Ken, here you say on quieter events that don't meet the sound requirements is, what is the sound requirement?
Well, I think what the Planning and Zoning Commission was trying to do there was saying that, no matter what they did, they had to meet the rest of the requirements, like any other event and the permits. So for this one, it would be the eighty-five and eighty. Um, not really knowing what those levels would be, they just wanted to have that in print, I think, just to, just so something doesn't come in that happens to be louder, but.
Mrs. Shrat, you have this, he gave us, does he have this fine chance?
I didn't pick up.
That was the one I referred to, letters on, if you can look at it, without having to read it all. So I was just saying, 'cause you said it's be on the back, it'd be number seven, I think is what, is what Alman Scully's talking about, the quieter events, the most likely events, no more derby, truck tractor pulls, go-kart events, and any event with less than ten cars. Look at letter F, it says, "All quieter events will be required to meet the sound requirements found in the permits." Are you kinda, are you, maybe you want to add, are you saying that, 'cause you're saying you can meet sixty-five decibels on those, correct?
Yes, I'm, what I'm saying is, if you wanna say, right now you have a sound ordinance in effect that says sixty-five decibels. For this CUP, it's gonna say eighty-five up until ten and eighty, whatever the numbers were. And I'm saying that if I do any other events, I will meet what you're, and, and again, we need to define how it's done. It's three-minute, you know, you can't stand out there at the sound meter and wait for somebody to holler and spike it out at ninety decibels. So the three-minute average is what, the way they've taken the test in the past, I, you need to define that, that how they take the test under a three-minute average, time-weighted average is what they call it, that we can be under sixty-five decibels for any of those other events.
So, so if we put on there, following the same criteria that's up in, under the number three, letter A, if we meet that criteria at sixty-five decibels, you'd be okay for the quieter events with that?
For, now you, are you talking about?
I'm just talking about the quieter events, I'm talking about.
The quieter events.
Yes, I'm not talking about the other events.
Yeah, the quieter, yeah. I mean, and honestly, that's what, the only thing that I would request is that you determine how the sound reading's taken. I mean, that's, that's very important. Like, right now, we're talking at sixty-five decibels, just if you wanna look at the sound meter of what it is instantly. So it needs to be taken in the same manner the other ones are, which is a three-minute time-weighted average, is what, that we said, the three-minute time-weighted average, I will be under, for those other events, I will be under the sixty-five decibels at, for these other events. I don't have a problem with that.
What, Ken, what's the distance of that, the end of the cul-de-sac on James Rollo? I know he, Mr. Shrat, I think, asked for, what was it, twelve hundred feet?
Yeah, originally, there was a, there was a request to do like a, basically a twelve hundred feet circle. Um.
That cul-de-sac?
I don't know. To be honest, the reason we picked that spot was it was the closest spot, that's not gonna change, 'cause it's road right-of-way. Um, we had been doing it, um, actually, a little bit closer to the track on the, the north right-of-way line for the railroad. It's, I don't, to guess, it's probably.
Figuring out what a GPS coordinate is for that area?
We can, one of the.
If not, does something?
I don't have a problem with that, as long as, the word this green dot is, I just wanna know, every time we do this, this is exactly what we're talking about.
If we go out there for GPS to that area and say, "We're gonna record it," that way, there's just no.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
You know, oh, what's, what's, you know, I just, I just don't, I wanna tighten.
I, I do too.
Where there's as little possible.
I agree a hundred percent. Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. This, this is not fun for me or any of these people, or the people that are opposed to it. This hasn't been a fun several years for me.
I have one other problem with it, Dennis, too, and I don't wanna explain why. Um, the penalty they put in there, they said, um, you can't, if you have a violation, you have to, um, take care of it within what, thirty days or something. Um, I agree with that on if you violate building or something, codes out there, it gives you thirty days. I don't agree with it on the sound levels. Because, and the reason I don't agree with it is because I don't want us back in here if you go over the ninety degree, a ninety thing, canceling the CUP again. I would like to put some penalties in there that, say, for example, um, if you violate the ninety decimal level, um, the first time, you get a warning. If you violate it again within the thirty-day period, you get closed down for a day. And maybe you violate it twice in the same thirty days, you get shut down for two days. And I'm doing this because like, the only al- alternative we have right now is if you violate that sound ordinance, is to revoke the CUP again, I don't want this to go through that again. You feel confident you can stay within the ninety degrees, if, you know, the ninety decimals, this will give you one-time warning, second time, possible penalty. And it gives us leverage that we can go to people that are complaining and say, hey, we have something in place, if he violates it, we can do something. I, I fully support the gray track, I want you there, guys. Um, but we also have people that are complaining, and they are citizens now, they had a right to complain before.
I agree, I've, I've never disagreed with that.
Because you weren't within the lines of the CUP, that's not your fault, that was the problem with CUP. We're trying to put a CUP in place now that will take care of that problem. But I, I want.
What do you, I'm not saying I'm against it, just explain it to me exactly, if we go over.
Well, if, if, like I said, the thirty days is fine if you violate a code.
Right, right.
You got thirty days to correct that. But giving you thirty days to correct going over ninety decimals, you know, that's.
What, what are you asking that it be then, I guess?
Well, then, if you violate the ninety decimals, first time, you get a warning. If you violate it again within the thirty days, you would get you shut down for one of your racing events. If you violate it twice in the thirty days, after the first warning, so actually it's three times, you get shut down for two days. That gives some, some enforceable penalties without having to try and revoke the CUP again.
I would say, as long as you guys leave intact what I've already said, I know I can do, what he has explained to you there, I don't have a problem with that, as long as you don't start doing a bunch of other stipulations that I know I can't meet, so.
That's, that's the only problem I have, it's just, there is no penalty with this, except to take the CUP away again. And we don't want that, we didn't want this, this time. But we had to get rid of it so we could, we could get rid of that stupid sixty-five decimal. That's what this whole thing's been about, not wanting to close you down, but to get a CUP in place that was enforceable. And agreeable.
Right.
So, that's my only caveat to it.
So like, like under number ten?
No, where they, where they say they're, you know, they got thirty days to, to correct a, a problem, or something of the nature.
Mr. Mayor, I think actually, one of the things that we would wanna do is if, if we added some sort of penalty provision to it. Um, so if Dennis does, or if, if the racetrack does violate that sound level, obviously, we need to notify him. But we need to make sure that we preserve his right for due process, so we would have to have some sort of, and we could, we could expedite it, with some sort of administrative hearing that he could come in and say, you know, no, I didn't, here's my sound results, whatever that case may be. Uh, but I, I think we're gonna have to include something like that, if, if the penalty is going to be shutting the racetrack down for days, I, I think he has, he'd be able to make, have a hearing before, whether it's the city administrator, the mayor, and, you know.
That's, that's fine, I just, I, I just don't want a penalty in there that means doing away with the CUP again. That's crazy. We have to have something in there that's reasonable to everybody and enforceable.
I would be okay with what Ryan said, I think that's, that's a part of it I didn't think of. I mean, I would want due process to make sure your meter wasn't wrong, or wasn't calibrated properly, or something, or we could get somebody out there and.
It's not that you can stay under ninety degrees anyhow, or ninety decimals anyhow. You're, you know, twice in the same, in same thirty-day period, because it'd be any threat of any penalty. But I, I do agree with the due process part.
I would be okay with that, I, that, I feel fairly, I feel very confident. We've taken, you know, Mike and him, and I feel very confident that what we've come up with is something that we can live with. And again, I wanna make it very clear, we aren't making the track any noisier. We aren't asking for the track to make any more noise, we will continue to make it quiet, quieter. And as technology goes, hopefully, different mufflers, uh, we, we put the thing in there to where we can check. If God comes to my track, we get away from his car a hundred feet, we put the sound meter on it. If it's over ninety-five decibels, he either loads it up and goes home, or he buys our muffler. So we've got some things in place that we can check instantly, without taking four hours to do a sound reading, and then, by the time that you're done. So I can stop these guys, they're not in compliance, I can stop them from racing before they ever get on the track.
Okay. Well, I think what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go down the list and just make sure, you know, you don't have any dissent or comments towards any of them, and anybody on the board didn't have any questions or comments, that way we just go in order. So we'll start with number one, which is forty-five race car events will be allowed for a year. Uh, does not include March test and tunes. The events will run from April to October, and this includes two race nights every other week.
That's through October, make, you, I think it's.
End of October?
Yeah, I mean, it's actually April, the month of April through the month of October.
Okay, so should we go, maybe we just put the dates, uh, April first through October thirty-first?
Yes. The, the only thing I might add, and we put it down here somewhere else, I would like the ability to where, say, a big touring series came to me and said, "We would like to do an event in November." We got a big event that's gonna bring a lot of people to our town, still gonna be in compliance with all the sound issues and stuff, to where I could come to the council and say, "We've got a race coming to town that we can get," and at least having the option to ask whoever's on the council, uh, for the ability to add a race if we need to.
Well, we could add, we could add a letter D there, correct? With that stipulation that, if there's a race that falls outside of these parameters, or puts him over forty-five or whatever, that he can petition the council to allow that? You'd like a letter D?
Mayor, I mean, I think it would be the same thing as, uh, when he needs to ask permission if he's going to do something on a school night, it would be the same type of thing.
But this would be a little, this would be a little, this would be a little different, because like, something came in November, or whatever.
Right, right, but that would be the same-
Well, maybe you say, outside of the normal CUP.
If you want to extend, you want to extend the CUP.
Yeah. Petition the council to, I mean, you have to say, "I can," but at least I have the ability to, to plead my case, I guess.
So, we have changing B from April first to the October thirty-first, with the actual dates. And then adding, uh, you have a petition clause if you, if a race falls outside those normal parameters. Anybody from the board have anything on number one that they'd like to discuss?
I have, I have a question.
Okay.
When, before the CUP was revoked, and you had come to us, we were going to negotiate, and, uh, everything stopped at that point. Um, one of the things you brought up was you would be willing to drop the race count to thirty, thirty-five races. I forget the number, but it was in the thirty range. Um, why the big jump here?
Hedging, I, we, I've never had, I've never, ever went over thirty-five races out there with rainouts. We put it at thirty-five, and I have, you know, seven or eight rainouts, now I'm down to twenty-five events, and I can't pay the bills to twenty-five events. I mean, it's, there's no way in the world we're ever going to get that many events in. I, it's, I've had as, as many as fifty percent rainouts since I've been there, and I think the best I've ever done is probably twenty-five percent rainouts. That's best case scenario.
And did I understand you right, Ken, when you mentioned forty-five races plus weekday races, of seven, which would be fifty-two potential-
I, yeah, that, I don't need, forty-five total events count in the weekdays. I, I think that was maybe misinterpretation on whenever I gave it to them. I'm not asking for any extra dates over that forty-five. If I go, if I need any extra dates over the forty-five, I don't have a problem of coming to the council, and outside of the parameters, and if, and it, it's just never going to happen. I've been out there for seven years, and I don't think we've ever went over thirty events, in seven years that I've had the track, so.
Saying, clarify, number one is say forty-five total races?
Yeah, I think if we're going to go that way, we probably just need to move number five up into number one. So, it's forty-five races per year, and then that could be a E or something under that.
Gotcha.
Please do about seven weekday events.
Yeah, so that's included.
And that figures out one a month what that is. And I, I've never had more than two weekday events, ever. I, again, if you get a rainout or something, that's the reason that's in there, uh, two, two, two weeknights events is all I've ever done, maybe three. I might, I take that back, we had three one year, so, uh, I don't ever see doing seven events, but if you have a rainout, it just gives you the ability to schedule another one if you have to.
And along the lines of the weeknight events, um, personally, I'd like to see, uh, uh, earlier curfew, just based on the complaints I've received.
I understand what you're saying, but the, any of those weeknights events are going to be special races, and it's impossible to, I mean, I ain't going to stand up here and lie to you. It's going to be impossible to get them in. I will try to get them in before ten, but it's out of town touring guys, you get guys that come in late. If you have an accident out there, you've got to bring out the ambulance to, you know, it's just almost impossible to get done before ten. And I don't want to, I, I, I was like, and tell you, I do my best to be done by ten, but I don't have a problem with say, ten-thirty, you know? I can hedge it a little bit. Because the weeknight races, you tend to start a little later, because the people can't get there, you know, people are working and coming from out of town. So, you tend to start a little bit later on those weeknight events, uh, rather than your normal Saturday event, because you can kind of back those up a little bit, uh, or start them earlier, I guess.
But isn't your weeknight events, like that, there isn't school the next day, isn't it usually holidays?
Yeah, mo, eh, not always, I mean, not always, but there's definitely not school the next day, but people do have to work the next day. I mean, it's, it's a workday, but it won't be a, that's the reason we set it up, and I, I don't know if I've ever had a weeknight event during school time, I think.
Don't, don't you have one scheduled in May this year? It might be cutting it close, what, what day is that?
The Wednesday, yeah, we, yeah, that's before we did this, there's actually one this year, the first one-
Oh, they're digging it out pretty early, there's snow days this year, so it might be cutting, I mean, it may not.
Yeah.
Might be cutting it close.
And if we need to address that, we probably ought to address it, you know?
Can we define then, ten-thirty?
Well, I was, I was going to ask when we got to number two, because that was actually one of the calls I got, was, they didn't have a problem with the racetrack, but they wanted to know why we were going to go to eleven, and not like ten fifteen or ten thirty, because, you know, typically, you're over with by ten-ten or ten fifteenish.
Unless there's a prob-
And they were wanting to know-
Here's what, if, if you want to compromise that, just say, uh, ten-thirty with the ability to go past, to, to eleven o'clock, seven or eight times a year. That way, if I've got an event out there, and we've had a problem with ambulance or something, I've still got cushion, because I don't think we went to eleven o'clock maybe four or five times this year. And it was always when there was an issue, so if we do that, give me something there, give me X number events to where I'm not breaking my CUP until I, then, if I go past the six or seven events, then I'll just have to shut off at ten. But I don't foresee that happening. Like I said, I'm here to negotiate and argue, so, uh, but it has to be something I can relate with.
I think it's the Monday through Thursday, the biggest question is.
If you want to do that at ten-thirty, then I, I'll just tell them, "Guys, we've got to be done at ten-thirty." I mean, I, and I, because that's a school night, so I understand that, it's a little different, so, uh, on the weeknights, ten-thirty. Uh, if you feel more comfortable on the other one, at ten-thirty, and give me, you know, it, seven nights would be one night a month to go to eleven if we had to.
Okay, so we could do ten-thirty curfew on weekdays, which would be your Sunday through Thursday, and then ten-thirty, the other nights of the week, with the exception of up to five nights, five-
We raised, if you did seven, that's one night a month that we would have-
Up to seven nights going to eleven on Friday.
Do, I mean, I, I would never schedule that, but at least if something happens.
Can't even track all this. I'm trying to, never make a fool. Does anybody else have anything on number one then? I covered number two also. Okay. Uh, number three then, uh, so, so it's eighty-five maximum sound level until ten PM, eighty maximum sound level from ten until eleven.
Correct.
Method would be, method of measurement would be three minute weighted average measured after, and we'll, I think, take that out, put an actual GPS coordinate in there, we can go down and find-
And that, that should be northernmost then, instead of southern, shouldn't it?
Uh, southernmost in the cold sack.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
But I think we just strike that part, and you guys get together, go out there for GPS, find a, you know, a place, put the actual coordinates down, that way there's not any question, that's the way it is. Anybody have anything on, any questions on number three?
I personally have an issue with the eighty-five and eighty, just because of the complaints I've received. And it is what it is, I understand, you, you know, there's a lot of folks here that brought up some comments earlier, that said that, well, the folks that bought the houses after two thousand and three knew that the racetrack was here, and I have to turn that argument around to, you bought the racetrack and you knew it was sixty-five decibels. Um, you know, was that all good decisions at the time for everyone? Probably, probably not.
We're here right now.
Yeah, and I just go, taking that, taking that number, and I know there were, Mike and I, and Ryan, and a few other folks had met with you probably three years ago, and our comment to you was, "Help us help you," because we were getting so many complaints at the time when, I don't know if the trees were just recently cut down or what, but I know at that time, we were getting an excessive amount of complaints from the north side of town. And one of the, one of the questions we continued to ask was about the mufflers. And I'd like to see, one, I, I, I still don't understand why we can't have quieter mufflers. I mean, if it's important to all the racers to, to continue to race, um, all these people live out of town, or many of them live out of town. And I get this as their passion, their hobby, I mean, we all have, you know, have our hobbies. Um, but at the same time, they're not at home making all the noise, they're coming to town, and, you know, there's quite a number of people paying a significant property tax, and, and-
I pay thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I understand that.
I agree.
And I just got to believe that if we can put, uh, quieter mufflers on street legal cars that have just as much horsepower, there's got to be something that we could do here.
No, there's not. I mean, I, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative. You guys asked me to come up with a program that's realistic. This is a realistic program, we took the data, you know, I can't force the race people to make a muffler for my track. That, we, we are having them run the best technologies that's available to race cars today, you know, and that's all I can tell you. The, the difference between the decimal reading, where the people at, over in Woodbury, that, where most complaints come from, on a race night that we didn't race, to a night that we did race, and this is all documented with the sound test, there's a three decimal difference. Three decimals is not detectable to the human ear, according to reports.
Yeah. Can we take a poll on the board, poll the board and see if that's a problem with any of the bikes? I don't have a problem.
Ken, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but if, I, I'm not agreed, I'm not agreed, it's that I know, the second I walk out of here, I'm going to break the CUP the first time I race, and that's what's going to happen. I, I just, I can't do it.
Well, and I understand that, I'm, I'm asking the question because this is the first time you've come to the table and, and talked to us directly about this whole negotiation back and forth.
Right.
And up to this point, we've not had any ability to give, you know, toss questions your way in, in a manner-
And I understand, and I don't want, but whenever we went over all this data, it was a very small, there was one spike in there that was eighty-five. You know, a three minute spike. The rest of them were well under that. So, most of the time, even though we're going to set it at eighty-five, to where I'm not up here getting in trouble for that, you know, because they're down there and they happen to hit that one eighty-five, most of the time, most of that stuff was down around eighty decibels, you know? The reason we went with eighty-five, that was the very highest point that we ever had, where they were taking the sound reading, so that's where we set it there. To be honest with you, most of the time, it's probably going to be eighty, is what it's going to be. But I don't want to set it at eighty and have him up, one of your guys up there, "Well, he hit eighty-three, so write him a ticket, and let's start the process."
Well, a, and I understand that. I, I know at, at some point, at, at some point, there was conversations about, uh, you standardized on a particular muffler, muffler that you're requiring all your racers to use. And there was conversation at the time that there's another better muffler out there, but the cost is five to six hundred dollars more than the next one.
That didn't come from me. That, if, if somebody said that or brought it up, it didn't come from me. So, yeah, that may have been somebody in the audience that said something, but it, that, that figure's never come from me, I don't know. I'm sure there's probably, if you want to spend five or six hundred dollars, there might be something out there, but I'm trying to be realistic. If you guys want the track to stay open, of what we got to have, you know, and I will continue to look, you know, um.
What are, I know you said that you'll keep looking, I, I guess, we want to know that if we up this here, and as long as you're keeping it, you're not going to try to be quieter. You understand what I'm getting at?
I understand, yeah.
You said, as long as technology keeps getting better, we could try to keep it quieter.
Right.
I guess is-
Well, and that's the reason we put the, we can measure the cars at the muffler when they come in, to where, at, at least it gives us, they don't even get on the track, we know what they're going to, what the noise level's going to be before they ever get out there with that hundred foot at ninety-five decibels. And to be quite honest with you, in the entire United States, that's kind of the criteria that almost every track uses, is that ninety-five decibels at a hundred feet, whenever they come, and these are tracks that are in downtown LA, I mean, these are a lot more populous than what we are. And that's what they're using, so we haven't tried to reinvent the wheel here, uh, and tried to use the data that's out there that everybody else is using, and I feel comfortable implementing it, so, I mean, that's the reason, that's where we came up with this stuff. We didn't make any of this stuff up, it was all taken from other racetracks, and, uh, from our own sound studies that we've done.
Brian, did you have something?
I'd like to answer your question. Uh, twenty years ago, on race cars, no, nobody made a muffler for the race cars. Ten to fifteen years ago, mufflers started coming in, as cities, towns encroach on all these racetracks, you're going to see better mufflers come out. Right now, we can't make the manufacturers, Schoenfeld, everybody, make a quieter muffler for, for us. But as the need across the country starts coming in, they will start making them, otherwise, they won't have anybody to sell their mufflers to. So, as of right now, the mufflers that we have out there are the quietest that we can put on the cars now. Now, you know, to answer your question, could somebody spend a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, to make a muffler to make the car quiet? Maybe, but it's not offered from Schoenfeld, from any of these manufacturers. You know, if somebody starts spending two thousand dollars on a muffler, they're not going to race anymore. You got it, we've got to keep the racing economical, and also try and please the citizens, the people that live here. The technology will probably come in the future, as the manufacturers are, just like any manufacturing company, as they're forced to manufacture something to meet the needs, they will, they're not there yet. I don't know if this answers your question any better, but as I was sitting there listening to everybody, that's, that's what I was thinking. You know, they don't make anything that is that quiet yet, I'm sure they will, because all the tracks all over the country, towns are, you know, they're not making any more land, so they're creeping towards them, and as they creep towards them, people are like, "I've never heard that sound before."
But the, the debate, or the conversation at the time was, yeah, there are quieter mufflers, but it would require all the racers to significantly change the tuning in their cars, and change the whole dynamic of the race.
All the studies that I've done, because whenever he first started this, I did a lot of reading on a lot of different tracks. California has some of the, the strictest decimal levels. About the quietest you're going to get a muffler, what I read is between eighty and eighty-five decibels, depending on, now, I don't know how they were, they were measuring theirs. I know, I did a lot of supercross racing, motocross racing in arenas, in stadiums, and stuff like that, where noise is a big issue, because they're, they're covered, and the sound bounces off all the walls when you're in there. And the easiest way to make sure everybody there was in compliance is like you said, with the rope so far behind, you have to be, you have to be here. He is always calling the manufacturers, talking to them, seeing what they have in the works to get quieter mufflers, to get them quiet, quieter. But they're not going to make a special muffler for our track. It has to be a, yeah, and it, it is becoming issues all across the country, so, like, like I said, the quieter mufflers are probably coming down the road between five and ten years, and as that technology comes into play and becomes affordable, we can start mandating it and ma, and making the drive. We don't want, trust me, you know, if, if he could, if he could make everybody out there be sixty-five decibels and run, run around out there and nobody hear us, that would be great. He would be doing that.
Does that cover what you were saying, sir?
Me, I was just going to say, I live in Kansas City, Kansas, I gave you my address. I run two cars, I got my Saturday car, which runs mufflers. I run in Hartland, I run in Bayetta, I run at, uh, Lakeside, I have thirty-five. They don't have any mufflers. So, my muffler car gets started past nine, ten o'clock, and my non-muffler car in my house, in my area, because I live in a community too, and I don't want to, you know, make them act, and then they'll be on the news, and blah, 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 you know? Probably just be a ticket or a fine, I don't know, but, so my muffler car gets started up in the evening if I need to, and my other one doesn't. And the other thing is, we were talking about maybe a stock motor, street car motor, these motors we got are lightweight, they're made for, to run a whole season. I ran, I won the championship at the stock motors out at Dennis' track this year, and the reason I didn't come is because they had mufflers, tuning, definitely didn't, didn't bother me any. Uh, but I put mufflers on it, did real well, but our motors are made to last the season, so they're lightweight, and then when you start to restrict that pressure, he's restricting already with three fifty carburetors, smaller carburetors. he's restricting already with three fifty carburetors, smaller carburetors. So, you restricted the air coming in, the air coming out, it's gotta breathe. So, how big a muffler can we put in there to make it perform longevity, like you're talking about, you know, run a whole year, whatever?
And we would spend the five hundred dollars if it was there.
Yeah.
Because we've already spent a hundred and thirty dollars for three mufflers. Uh, they're not cheap, um, so, and we would, i- i- if it was there, we would do it. They're just not there. Um, and trust me, we had my car on the ice at, at Maverick, and they told us to take them off, 'cause they wanted to be as loud as possible. And four cars on the, uh, nine cars on the ice was way worse than a hot lap session at Valley. Uh, the mufflers make a huge, huge, huge difference.
Yeah, the Mavericks made us take the mufflers off, said the cars were too quiet.
Are you, uh- I guess, currently, up until this point, did you do any of the, like on number four, the Davis meet, the ninety-five DB, a hundred feet? Have you guys ever really before checked the DB level at a hundred feet off the cars?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a standard. It, it's not something we've got in place. But I've talked to Brian Brown, who, actually, Brian Brown, who's a resident of, uh, Green Valley, won the World of Outlaws race in, uh, Arizona this week. I mean, you guys got some top-notch drivers from this area that have done real well in racing. So, uh, I've leaned on them. Danny Lozowski, he's a, a guy from down here in Higginsville. Uh, Carl Edwards called me, Tony Stewart sending us a letter. So, I'm not just making this stuff up. I'm trying to base it on facts. 'Cause again, I don't wanna be up here again. If technology changes, it's like Brian said, if I could put a muffler on there that would cost a few hundred dollars and you wouldn't hear me at all, I'd be a happy camper. And I don't think the drivers would care as long as they- But again, having said all this, we got a drag strip down there. I can have twenty-four cars on my track, and they light up two of those cars on that drag strip. You can't hear nothing on my track. And I get blamed for all that. So, you know, if, if the drag strip's racing down there and the phone starts ringing at your guys' house the next day, it wasn't me. Just keep that in mind.
Well, how, I mean, Chuck, you said that you're okay the way it is now with the eighty-five and eighty?
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I don't think that's the ne- I didn't think it was an issue at all. If Bob had an issue with it, I thought we oughta pull it and see if anyone else had an issue.
Alman Schaefer, where are you at on that?
I really don't have a problem with the, the way it's set up. I would like to, I prefer louder cars, like you did last year, louder cars earlier in the evening.
We th- and we still do that.
And louder cars later in the night, and not really see eighty-five DBs later. I mean, if you're gonna run your, your quieter cars later that night, why do you need to be eighty-five DBs?
I don't. It's, it's at eighty.
It's, eight to five is eighty-five DBs till ten o'clock.
Yeah, and then we go, then we go to eighty. We drop the decimal for the-
So, why?
I always, okay, I always run the quieter cars last, no matter what. So, the, the loud cars might be done at nine o'clock. I mean, y- w- we, we can't just, you never know what time we're gonna get done. So, there's a good possibility that all the loud cars will be done before nine o'clock or by nine o'clock, you know? Uh, but if they're not, I don't wanna, again, I don't wanna be up here getting cited, you know, because if we have to go to ten o'clock, the loud cars will be out there, you know, and then I'm gonna be in trouble. So, this is what we've come up with that would work.
Your, your A-mods were, and I, forgive me, because I, I'm, I don't watch racing. I, it's not my thing. But I support the racetrack. I don't have a problem with the racetrack. My problem is, uh, um, here we go. My problem would be, uh, if you bring back the A-mods, and I, and I only know this 'cause talking to the couple of drivers, that is your loudest car, correct?
The tests we did, in this report, we did, the A-mods and the B-mods were basically identical sound levels. There was no difference in the two.
They're the same sound level?
Based on the, the tests that we did, the last ones we did.
Right.
You'll see some A-mod races on there. And actually, I think the B-mod race, 'cause we had twenty-four cars, uh, was maybe just, maybe one or two decimals higher.
I think you need some assurance that you're gonna run them cars first and not last, or in the middle of the pack.
Well, that's the reason we put the, dropped the decimal reading.
But I make sure that you're gonna actually run them vehicles at that point.
Well, if it's over eighty decimals, I'm gonna get a ticket. I mean, that's kinda what Chuck said, you know, to, if I go over that decimal reading after ten o'clock, they're gonna be giving me a citation, you know? So, I'll, I'll guarantee you, they will be done before ten o'clock.
What are you, what are you, what are you running this, are you running A-mods this year? You just wanna do-
Well, we've got a couple of special races. I mean, I think we've got maybe three A-mod races this year. Anytime you have a special, it's, it's usually A-mods.
So, you're gonna run B-mods, and you're running that new E-mod class, right?
Yeah.
How are they gonna be compared to B-mods?
Quite a bit quieter.
So, so what is the, what, is it, are the-
Dirt demons or the mod lights the quietest?
About the same.
That's it. So, what do you normally, so you run one of those?
I rotate them. The guy, the guys get irritated. Everybody says, "Well, we don't wanna run last every week." So, I rotate the dirt demons and the, uh, and I, I'll probably rotate the E-mods. We'll get some sound readings on those guys when they get out there, and if they're helping, they may be quieter. I don't know. If they're quieter, I'll run the E-mods last. Again, I, I got no reason to wanna be up here ever again. But I don't wanna leave here with something I know I can't beat.
Alman Scully, how are you on that?
Okay.
Alman West?
I don't have a problem with the eighty and eighty-five.
Alman Arnold?
I, I think they're actual numbers. I know our sound studies, you're right, it would be difficult to beat anything much lower than that.
And again, I just, to where you're okay with it, the eighty-five, we may never hit it, you know? Most of the time, it's gonna be around eighty, but I don't want, you know, I just, I can't inf- and look at the sound study we did. Most of the time, it's down around eighty, but if we set it at eighty, I'm gonna bust it. I know I will. So, at eighty-five, I know we can get that. That's what the sound study showed. That's, and that's what we based all this stuff on. We based this stuff on data history, not what we would like it to be. And again, most of the people who've got up here that really don't have an affiliation with the racetrack say that they feel it's gotten quieter over the last three or four years. So, the sound study you guys did in two thousand and ten, and the one I did last year, it shows that the, the track is quieter than what it was, at least in Woodbury. I mean, we were about, compared to what you guys did when you did yours, we were about seven decimals quieter in Woodbury than what we had been in two thousand and ten. So, we've made some headway, and we'll continue to. We got some other things out there we're gonna try. But, um, this is what I know that we can do right now, and not get in trouble.
We talked about, number four is all cars must meet ninety-five DB limit measured one hundred feet. RPM level between three thousand, four thousand.
You'll do that every race when they come in?
Mm-hmm.
That'd be a difference.
Yeah, we probably won't, we'll spot check them, you know, 'cause once in a while, I get a car that comes in and says, "Well, I got a muffler and it, it's fine. It'll work, so I'll get my rope out and say, 'Start it up,' and if it don't work, like, go buy a muffler. Go buy our muffler." 'Cause I hear that a lot. These guys race other tracks with mufflers, and I don't know what they're at. But this gives me the ability to say, "Well, here's what-" And, and this is standard. This is standard across the country, that ninety-five. So, anybody that travels, they're already being tested that way.
What are they actually running? You said that's the high side, and they're usually under that.
On the ninety-five?
Usually, what is the actual DB they usually run? I'm just curious.
With, with the mufflers on them?
With the hundred feet, you said usually they're under that?
Under ninety, they're, they're bumping, I mean, they're ninety-two, ninety-three, yeah, they're, they're right there. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, they're not, let's, they're not at eighty-five. I say not at eighty-five. Some of the little cars, like the dirt demons and some of them, they're down around eighty-five. And the E-mods, I'm thinking the E-mods is, I'm, I'm thinking it might be our quieter class this year, but I haven't been able to do any testing with it yet.
Uh, number five was the seven-week night race events allowed per year. We talked about moving that up to one. I think we've talked about that. What we're gonna do with those. Uh, six, all classes will run functional mufflers. Seven, we already discussed with the quieter events. And adding that they'll meet-
Sixty-five.
Six, they'll meet sixty-five DB with the same measurement that we use.
At the same, and at that, wherever that dot was. That, that dot's gonna be the standard of what, 'cause that's the closest spot to the track. So, the same standard of measurement, the, uh, three-minute time weighted average, six minute, or, uh, sixty-five decimals at that green dot, where, wherever that, whatever it is.
Uh, eight, permit shall be valid for three years.
I got a question. Can we go back?
Yeah.
Can you, can you shed some light on item E? Any event with less than ten cars on the track at a time is considered a quieter event?
Like, we just want to do go-karts. I don't, some, I, there's, there's all kinds of different cars. I guess the only assurance you got there is, no matter what I do, I gotta be at sixty-five decimals. So, I mean, that will assure you that if I get something that has, you know, eight cars and it's seventy decimals, I can't run them. 'Cause I'm gonna, I'm agreeing to the sixty-five decimals. So, that is your assurance that even if it's five cars, you know, uh, if we find out that those cars are over sixty-five decimals, at that point, we just won't run them. I mean, that, that gives you some assurance and gives me the-
I'm sorry, man. I'm, I'm assuming with this being said, you're not planning on bringing your, uh, what do you call it, your jet truck or whatever in?
Eh, I've brought him in for two years, but, uh, and I don't know what the decimal reading was on that, to be honest with you. We, it was loud.
It was loud. I had somebody call, I, I had, I had somebody call me and want, and wanna know what in the world she thought there was a seven forty-seven landing her backyard.
I wish I would've tested it. I ha- I don't have any idea what that thing was that night, but it wa- it was loud. It was a plow, crowd pleaser. People loved it.
Do you have anything else on number seven, then?
Just that, this is not, it's not like A-mods or anything like that.
Well, it is. You have to go with sixty-five.
Yeah, no matter what it is, yeah, it's, I don't have a problem, 'cause I, you know, I wanna be a good neighbor, so I, if I can find something that's quieter, that's under sixty-five, then I will pursue it if I can. If it's not, I just won't do it.
Would you feel, would you feel better saying that any event with less than ten cars that aren't a normal scheduled type of car?
I don't have a problem with you saying-
Like, list A-mod, B-mod, there, I mean.
I s- I don't have a problem saying, uh, if quieter events are run, they must meet the sixty-five decimal current city code. That way, it's like, you can just throw everything out, like, okay, if you are doing an event that's over sixty-five, unless it falls within, up here where we're doing the eighty, eighty-five, we just won't do them. I mean, it just, any other event that we would do out there, at that point, has to be sixty-five or under. We just won't do them.
But this would allow you to run, if you had four A-mods, you could run them every night. And in theory, I'm just saying on paper, and this is what we're trying to get to, is get it documented. And I'd have to-
And I understand what you're saying, but if I run four A-mods every night and you can't hear them, what difference does it make? And I'm not trying to be sarcastic. I mean, I, if I meet the sixty-five and nobody can hear them, and I'm not trying to say I'm gonna run four A-mods every night, I, you know, I'm just, if you wanna leave it the way it is and just say, "Must meet sixty-five," I'm okay with that. And that, that way, it doesn't list A-mods in, well, I guess ten cars on the track, but-
I'd, I'd like the wording changed that somehow where we can both agree. 'Cause there are going to be people that will still hear it. And I know it's XDB here, and I can tell you, it sounds like the track's in my backyard sometimes. Sometimes it does not. I don't know why, but whether it's three cars, five cars, ten cars, I, you know, folks are gonna hear it. And if they hear that drone every night, that's gonna be an issue. And it's gonna cause bigger problems.
I agree with Dennis. It's under sixty-five decimal. What difference does it make what, what it is? I run the seven forty-seven out there. It's under sixty-five decimal.
And we're, and we're here to talk, and, and we're here to talk about this, so we can get it on paper. So, we're not sitting here again next year, or the year after, or the year after.
Are you just not, you just don't like the way this is?
Any event.
I fear Bob's getting that.
So, I'm trying to figure out how the, now, I guess my question is, on, on the quieter events, were you looking at those being during the week?
I don't have anything in mind, to be quite honest with you, other than if I can come, come up with something out there to make money, I'm, just like anybody else, if I can get an event out there that I can make money with to pay my bills, I would like the ability to do it, as long as I'm not infringing on someone else's quiet noise. I mean, that's the reason that if we went with the sixty-five at that point, I just, I just can't imagine them, it being an issue. You know, whether it's one car or, like, we'll do our test and tunes. There'll be one car out there at a time. And you get a thousand feet away from racetrack, you can't even hardly hear them, you know? It just, and again, I'm not trying to be argumentative. If there's some way we can word it, I don't have a problem with it. But, uh, and I don't have anything at this point. Um, I like my time off too, so I'm not looking to do anything seven days a week out there. But if something would arise that I could make a profit at, then I don't wanna be limited to my facility of not being able to do it, is the whole reason for that section.
Ray? I think originally when Dennis submitted this, we didn't have the sixty-five decimal limit attached to it. And so, what he was trying to do is describe different events. I wonder if it would be easier, Alman Headley, if we just eliminate, strike all of the different types of events and just put motorized events. Under sixty-five decimals will be considered a si- a quieter event and will not count towards the races. 'Cause I think what we're doing is, with, with ten cars, or twenty cars, or five cars, it, it, it doesn't matter how many cars is going to be on the track, because now we've added this sixty-five decimal limit with the three-minute LEQ, um, the amount of vehicles out there probably won't make a, a difference, as long as it, it meets that guideline. So, probably the bigger question is, do you want to allow quieter events? Rather than trying to, um, get too specific on what event, or what vehicles would be allowed out there.
Take them all off and say, quieter events will be defined as events where-
Motorized events that are under sixty-five decimal, LEQ, measured at the same area.
Events that goes over sixty-five decimals, it counts against, it counts like a regular race event.
Correct.
That's right.
Mr. Schratt, that sound all right?
Yeah.
So, that's just on Monday through Thursday.
Huh?
Actually, Monday through Thursday.
Well, he'd be able to do it any, I mean, he'd be able to do it any day, as long as it didn't go over sixty-five.
Correct.
Right.
If it went over sixty-five, it would count toward one of his other racing events.
Correct.
Okay. I got you now.
So, I mean, he could do something on a Sunday. Say he gets some really loud go-karts out there for some reason. They get a reading over sixty-five, it would discount as one of his regular races.
Right.
Off of the total, off of the total of forty-five.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, number eighteen, uh, permit should be valid for three years.
I would like some clarification on that. Um, I don't wanna be up here renegotiating this every three years. I'm assuming after three years, have, if we have done what we're supposed to, not had a bunch of violation, I'm assuming it will be extended for another three years.
How that works, I know we can't tie, reach our board.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to tie the commitment to it, but I, it, it wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. So, if we get a conditional use permit that works well for you, and it works well for the city, and we're not having complaints or going over the decimal limit, um, we, we, uh, renew conditional use permits on a regular basis that we don't have media or a full room of people with. So, I, I would suspect it would be the same in the future, as long as we don't have any issues.
I guess that's what, say, whenever my three years was up, a bunch of people said, "Let's go up there and raise hell and see if we can get it." You know, if I'm doing what I'm supposed to, staying within the guidelines, being done what I'm supposed to, I don't wanna have the ability to get shut down in three years, because a bunch of people wanna come up here and start screaming, either side. I don't want, I people have to come up. I, I guess the assurance I want is, you stay within these guidelines and you don't get tickets. Like, uh, Chuck has said, uh, will, you know, you, have you done what you're supposed to, it will be extended if you're staying within these guidelines.
Well, like Brian said, we, we can't commit a, we can't commit a board in three years, you know? Well, like Brian said, we, we can't commit, we can't commit to the word in three years from now, we don't know. But like he says, also, we, we normally renew CUPs with no problem whatsoever.
I mean, it's really nothing, yeah.
I mean, in theory, if, you know, there's seven new people up here, they could revoke it anyways, right?
Correct, yeah, I mean... They have to revoke it for a reason.
There has to be a reason.
Yeah. I, I just don't wanna get into like, okay, in three years, we're starting over. We've decided we like sixty decibels, you know? I don't wanna get caught in that trap.
I mean, there would have to be, there would have to be a reason to do that.
If they didn't extend it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, but the, the issue with land use is that, I mean, the, the conditions of all of the land use can change. So, I mean, that's why generally CUPs have, um, have limits on. Now, um, for the most part, I mean, CUPs are renewed, pretty much just, they just come up and then they're, they're renewed. Well, I mean, the conditions won't change, and as long as they haven't been issues with it, they just get renewed. So, it's generally not a problem, but that's the reason why, that there are limits on conditional use permits.
All right, you see where I'm coming from.
Oh, sure, no, I, I completely understand.
I don't wanna spend two years and we change our minds.
Right, yeah, and it won't be just... It, it's gotta be more than, "We changed our minds." It's gotta be, there ha- there has to be a reason, and there has to be changed conditions, um, to not renew a conditional use permit. So, if the conditions don't change...